Okay, welcome to the regular council meeting. The date is February eighteenth, the time is seven P M. And with that, I'll call the meeting to order. Uh, there is nothing to report out of the closed portion as there was no closed portion this evening. Uh, with that, I'll move uh for a motion to adopt the agenda. Okay, moved by councillor Abbott, seconded by councillor Tosen. Any amendments?
Could I add um the letter from the the email that we received yesterday or today from the L G L L G M A? Uh, which I think will come up when we're talking about the U B C M. Uh, anyway, in terms of of what what activities councillors will be involved in. So if I could add the L G M A letter to correspondence. And also add a letter from Trudy Luthy to correspondence and also uh a letter from the First Nations. That's the letter here, so but if you could also add that correspondence, I went to speak to uh probably to each of those actually.
Uh, anything else?
Um. No, we have their correspondence policy. Shouldn't we just be doing these things by rotation as long as they're coming on time? Instead of adding things, additional things every meeting? Well, I don't know that any of those are pressing, they need to be discussed through it.
Well, I I think they were sent in good faith. I think the L G M A definitely is, and the other two were sent in good faith well well ahead of the meeting, almost three weeks ago, so I think.
So they were just not included?
Yeah, they're just not included, so.
Okay, all right, good enough. Okay, anything else? If that'll call a question on paper, any general amendments?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Okay, uh, with that, we will move to public participation. Uh, anyone in the gallery? I saw a few people writing their name down at the podium. Anyone like to speak?
Uh, I'm Rose Duddy from three eighty Ocean View Road. And um I have been closely watching with great concern the expenditures that have been occurring since the change of mayor and council in our village, including the audit, which has cost us about a hundred thousand more than it has in the past, the legal fees, which have almost tripled, and the overruns on the beach park project. The amounts we're not clear about yet. But I'm here this evening to speak specifically about staff compensation, the increases of which are nothing less than mind-boggling. For instance, Nigel Jaffer, manager of Public Works, earned a hundred and five thousand in two thousand twenty-one and a hundred and nine thousand in two thousand twenty-two. Pam Rupp, the CFO, earned a hundred and five thousand in two thousand twenty-one. And because she took holiday pay in lieu of time off, her earnings were reported as being a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, but were in fact, like Nye's, uh, one hu- uh, one hundred and nine thousand. Their replacements are now earning base salaries of a hundred and thirty thousand. Haley, after fourteen years on the job, earns seventy-eight thousand in two thousand twenty-one, which increased by four thousand to eighty-three thousand for two thousand twenty-two. And her replacement with no years of experience is now, including benefits, pulling in almost a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. The replacement for the C O of C A O is now costing us more than the former C A O who earned one hundred and forty-four thousand in his last year. And the new C A O's beginning salary of a hundred and forty thousand already stands at a hundred and seventy thousand, a thirty thousand increase since he was hired just a year and a half ago. The irony here is that on April the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, Mr. Berry stood in this very spot to express his concern to the mayor and council at the time that staff salaries were going up at an alarming rate. Now it is public knowledge that the salaries have increased exponentially. Further irony is that that in Mr. Berry's platform in his run to be the next mayor, he stated that he would, and I quote, invoke an immediate staff hiring freeze to focus on our existing team. How does he now justify that the present staff members are earning so much more than the previous experienced, dedicated, and efficient staff that we once had? As I said, it's mind-boggling. At the same meeting on April nineteenth, Mr. Berry stated that now that COVID was over, he would expect staff to be called back to the office. And residents will, of course, be expecting him to stand by his word on that. The village continues to be very divided, and many of us have lost that feeling of pride that we once had in what was such a unique and well-run community. But surely it is time for all of us to come together and pay very close attention to how our tax dollars are being spent. I urge every resident to look at all the out-of-control expenditures that we've already faced, and more particularly, the figures with which we are now compensating our staff compared to the figures that caused Mr. Berry so much pain and concern prior to him becoming Mayor Berry. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else like to speak?
I'm here to speak. I'm Charlie Bradbury, and I'm here to represent, as a representative of the Lions Bay Bird Friendly Team, to support your request for decision that council formally accept the outcome of a community vote for an official bird and declare the chosen bird to be the avian symbol of the village of Lions Bay where relevant. A few years ago, as part of the Bird, Bird Friendly Nature Event, and for a bit of fun, I coordinated a village-wide poll to determine Lions Bay's favorite bird. The winner was, of course, the Anas Hummingbird. As part of an ongoing commitment to maintaining our status as a major Canada bird-friendly city, we are required to establish via community vote an official city bird. So I would like to hold another vote to officially choose a bird to represent our community. Although seagull has long been used in Lions Bay, rather like pine is to trees, seagull is not a bird species but a colloquial term which could encompass species as diverse as terns, skiers, and albatross. While acknowledging that a seagull will remain the historical a the historical avian symbol for the village, the Historical Society supports the selection of an official bird to represent Lions Bay's unique qualities. Do we stick with the Anas because it's small, independent, noisy, and present year-round? Or perhaps the Jiggy D, another winter-tolerant, chatty community bird? The village can decide. Using a combination of polling methods, the Bird, the Bird Friendly Team and the Historical Society proposed to hold a vote commencing in April and culminating in May with the vote outcome announced at the annual Bird Friendly Nature Event on the on the tenth of May. The vote will be open to all residents, with some as yet to be determined involved from the store. The vote, Whimber, will be submitted for ratification by council at the regular council meeting on May twentieth.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else in the gallery?
Hi, for me, I'd just like to hand out this little sheet.
One for the agenda, yeah.
My name is Morgan Gatwell, six-five Baby Road. Uh, I uh had put into the council agenda a breakdown of the beach park costs on Friday, I believe Thursday or Friday. And I have to apologize, my uh it was hastily put together, the formulas I used were terrible, and I realize my mistakes now. So this is really to supersede what I sent in on Thursday. And just to jump down the bottom of the page, because I don't think we have time to really go through the whole thing. You can see the potential Lions Bay contribution to the beach park revitalization. If we allow for twenty-five percent contingency, as was originally in the grant budget, the village would be on the hook for eight hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. And that's almost five hundred and sixty thousand over and above what was originally allocated in the grant. And we can move backwards through that if anybody has any questions, but I really feel at this point, we have to take a very, very critical look at this beach park project and where it's heading. If you look a little further up the page, I have a fifteen percent contingency, which is what the C CFO put in his budget. And that still puts us at six hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars over budget. So I don't know if anybody has questions on this or how I laid it out. I've tried to follow C O's CFO's uh breakdown. The numbers I've used are taken directly from his sheets. And um I've just reallocated them uh in as much that in the cost to date, he had twelve thousand dollars sent to N B A Architects as a retainer. So I took that out of the cost today and put that into the expected costs from N B A and Eurohous. Just to clarify how much is going into that part of the project, obviously taking it out of the cost to date. So if the numbers don't seem to line up completely with the CFO's numbers, that would be the reason why. I'd love participation in this, if anybody would care to.
Morgan, the uh the council is meeting tomorrow night uh on the beach park, and so uh that's something uh that we'll be discussing, but we haven't had a chance to look at these numbers. And of course, uh, last uh spring's uh vote by council was to to move everything towards uh the staff to manage this project, so.
Right, yeah. Regardless who's managing it, I think we really need to be very critical of the numbers here.
Uh huh, definitely.
I I just don't think the residents are going to accept this as it is.
Can I just maybe ask one question?
Sure.
So the number that you're carrying for construction costs for Eurohouse totals, is that the eight hundred and two thousand?
Well, this is the the other. When you break down the areas that um the original uh R F P stipulated, well, I shouldn't even say that. What was in the grant as far as where the money was being allocated? It appears that the CFO applied numbers to that that were provided, I'm assuming, by Eurohouse because they came under the Eurohouse N B A heading. I've simply used those numbers in, because I don't know how many numbers I have to work with. They don't come to eight hundred and two thousand, they come from nine hundred and two thousand. So I don't know where the discrepancy falls.
Okay, Morgan, thank you very much for that.
And I'm happy to talk tomorrow again.
Yeah, definitely, and and by all means, reach out to uh the staff, yeah. Councillor Brown?
Well, thank you, Morgan, for for all this work and for for the analysis here.
Sure.
Um, there's there's certainly, we're we're going to be having a very, very serious look at the project and tomorrow evening. And uh so it's really helpful to have as much background as we can.
Great.
And I really appreciate all the work that you did as as part of the Beach Park Committee as well.
Yeah, and at this point, you know, it's it's not, I I'm just very concerned where it's headed. And I think it's been demonstrated with past expenditures that it's not heading in a very good direction. And I'm very concerned that unless we stop it or change our approach, we are in trouble.
I I I see you here as a as a resident and really appreciate that.
Great.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else in the gallery?
One question, a few details, what I what I just heard.
Yeah.
So Michael, um, tomorrow night's meeting, it's more, is it a council meeting?
Uh, tomorrow night, the council has been invited to see architects.
Yeah, there's not a council meeting.
Correct.
Okay, so from what I heard, did you, from what I heard, did you, did you say Walton, Walton could come to you?
No, I didn't say that. I what I suggested to Morgan was that he should reach out and speak with our staff because the resolution on the table last March was to uh empower our staff to move forward on the beach park. Uh, now council is going to be meeting with the architects and the staff tomorrow. That for discussions. So Morgan, I would uh suggest that you reach out to the C A O and uh have a discussion with them offline, and he can bring it to council. Okay, so thank you very much.
So that that meeting tomorrow isn't open to the public?
No, it isn't, no. Okay, any other uh gal, yes, thank you.
I am David Dean, and I must speak to council as a whole, as well as C A O Blackwell. During the evening, it was a Marcus Reuters resignation this afternoon, it was very disturbing. Marcus was highly supported in the twenty twenty-three election by many residents. He approved himself as um being a highly motivated, strongly principled person in my eyes. He was elected to council to help bring upright local government to Lions Bay, but was not allowed to be. Councillor Royer was forthright, honest, full in of integrity, and truly wanting to do what's best for Lions Bay, in my opinion. But was brutally attacked in the line by Mayor Berry, councillor Broughton, and C A O Blackwell, trying to seemingly shut him down. You will claim innocence that this is not so, but it seemed your efforts were to do just that. Many residents came to council meetings to draw attention to many of the same consistent problems and concerns, but were also bullied into silence, to your delight, and have not heard or taken seriously whatsoever, in my opinion.
Okay, excuse me, Deirdre, um, we haven't received notice on any resignation, so I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
We have.
Where you're.
See, see our emails.
Uh, well, I haven't seen anything in the emails, and I was here since six o'clock, so.
What time was the email?
Uh, so I'm not sure where you're coming from, but um I think it would be uh proper if we just allow this to play out if, in fact, there has been a resignation. Uh, so.
Well, the C O has responded to it, so there has been one.
Well, I have not seen it, and uh we're here at the meeting, the meeting started at six.
If I could.
Yeah.
Uh, my recommendation to council is uh not to provide any speculation or comment on this, there's nothing uh that uh is yet official, and so until council, until the process is being properly executed, which it is not to my comfort level, um, uh, I I don't recognize any such letter being submitted.
Okay, all right, well, thank you very much, I appreciate your comment.
To say it's not got to do with his resignation.
Okay, and please uh be respectful of council and others.
I'm trying to be.
Okay.
I'm a very peace-loving person.
That's great.
So that's what I want. Many residents came to council meetings to draw attention to many of the same consistent problems and concerns, but were also bullied into silence, to your delight, and have not heard or taken seriously whatsoever, in my opinion. All the complaints that were made by each run for election in twenty twenty-three were, number one, promising transparency, two, bringing down staffing costs, three, getting the beach park costs in order under the restraint of the grant. All promises, in my opinion, have failed. Two plus two years in, and the beach park is no closer to going forward. The cost overruns are real, but I feel are being hidden away. Volunteers on so many committees have been disrespected and not valued. I feel lies have been told, and accurate information has been kept under wraps. The agenda of half of the council seems to be being pushed forward with no regard for the other half. Council is dysfunctional because of this power struggle. The one half is one hundred response, one hundred percent responsible. You are so wrapped up in your own misguided will and not the will of the residents, in my opinion. I have attended ninety-five percent of the council meetings for thirteen years now, as my husband Fred was on council eleven years of that time. I have observed closely what has transpired. To say I am dismayed at what I have seen is an understatement. Your treatment of councillor Royer has been atrocious. You're directly responsible for his.
Sorry, uh, Mayor Berry, uh, th- th- these are sorts of it's one thing to express opinions, it's not, it's another thing to cast dispersions. Uh, it's not appropriate in a council meeting, and I would uh suggest that I maintain decorum accordingly.
Okay, uh, Deirdre, you've had your two minutes. Thank you very much, appreciate uh your your appearance here, so thank you.
I think you need to do a lot of soul-searching myself.
Okay, all right, is there anyone else in council that would like to speak?
I I would just like to say I'm puzzled by the C O, I've just looked at Marcus's emails, all of us. He he's clearly resigned to council, that's what Community Charter calls for him to do, so I'm not sure why um, why is this suggestion that he has it?
Uh, councillor Abbott, um, I have mentioned, I have not seen a resignation, and I'm not sure whether others have, but I think this is uh something we should ruminate on and come back uh to council.
I was pointing out that you've all received it.
Point of information. Um, I've received, I was here at about six-thirty, I've been working, prepared for the meeting, and I and I noticed that at six forty-seven, that an email was received from councillor Ryder. I read the email. And I'm finding out from the podium.
I'm just advising.
So I'm finding that quite extraordinary.
Just advising you receive an email, whatever time it was, six forty-seven, the council writer resigned to council, I'm just telling you that.
Okay, and the council has not had a chance to look at this, so.
I think the Community Charter asks for it to, requires that you accept it, it just requires that he tells all the council, and he's done it, as well as the C E O, you could do it to either point. Um, and I'm, you know, I thank Deirdre for her comments, and now she's not, she's uncomfortable speaking, it's not a three or four tape. And uh, thank you for getting standing up and saying what you had to say. I think, I think we've let Marcus down as a counsel.
Councillor Abbott, again?
Say no more, we're gonna say no more.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, is there anyone online that would like to speak?
Robin Lockland.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Ten minutes.
Councillor McLaughlin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Berry. Uh, to those who you make, who are doing whatever you were doing, I suggest you to look at your telephone and see that Mr. Reuters has made it very clear about his resignation and why. And it's published in a very extensive article in Watershed. Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you. Okay, uh, well, as councillor Broden announced, apparently we've received a letter at thirteen minutes to seven, uh, which I have not seen, uh, but apparently others have, so that's fine. Any other uh hands up? In the gallery?
No.
Oh, okay, uh, with that, we'll move on to delegations. There are no delegations, so uh, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from January seventh, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Okay, second.
Um, yeah, I'll put a second.
Okay, second, moved by councillor, January seventh, twenty twenty-five, moved by councillor Broden, seconded by councillor Abbott. Any discussion? No, I'll call a question on paper.
I, yeah, I'm in favor.
Okay, opposed, motion carried. Uh, do we have a motion for January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five minutes?
So moved.
Okay, moved by councillor Broden, second.
We'll second them.
Seconded by councillor Abbott. Any amendments? I'll call the question all in favor.
I, please.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, uh, motion for February fourth, twenty twenty-five minutes. We have a motion to approve the February fourth, twenty twenty-five minutes.
So moved.
Second?
We'll second it.
Okay, uh, discussion?
Can you give me one second? For that time, for this one, okay, I can be.
Okay, all in favor?
I, yes.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we'll move to break to uh reports, staff, uh, reports on the park bench dedication policy. Uh, with that, I'll pass it over to Mr. Burr.
Thank you, good evening. Um. The policy was brought to light uh as a result of requests from uh two parties for new park bench dedications. Uh, in reviewing how things were done, we found that the uh the existing policy, such as this, is dated two thousand and three. We're not even sure that it's uh active, in that it was uh voted as an active policy by council then, or at any time, it seems to have been the way that things have been done. I drew on that policy and uh the policy of the city of Vancouver to come up policy uh for you. Pretty straightforward, um, it's a policy, not a bylaw, so it's it's uh it's relatively easy to change. Uh, we think that this policy will serve us well. Uh, I took the opportunity to update prices. Um, the previous policy had stated prices that are half uh of the prices that are in our fees by law. Whether uh the the policy or the fees by law numbers prevail, we don't know. But we will uh in in the full time amend the um fees by law. I've given you some understanding what I think they need to be in terms of the cost of the bench, the cost of the plaque, and um to the uh potential replacement fee. Apparently, this happens in Vancouver, people change their minds on wording, and they'd like to change uh the plaque, which we, we can do, that's not a problem. Um, the bench, as you see, is is the same bench that we've always used. It's the Capolano model from Sanus and Concrete, kind of prosaic, um, but there it is. Um, I would like to proceed uh uh on basis of this policy for the two parties that have applied. I've already indicated to them that we'll honor the old price, uh, in their particular case, because that's what they inquired under. I've confirmed with the financial officer that uh tax receipt can be issued for the donation portion of the fee, which is three thousand dollars. That's pretty much uh all that's on my report.
Okay, uh, just before I move forward, do we have a motion to uh approve policy twenty-five oh one?
Sure.
Okay, moved by councillor, seconded by councillor Broden.
Yeah.
Uh, discussion?
Um, I'm. Sorry, Jamie.
Sorry, Jamie.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, um, I really appreciate the policy coming forward and and um, but I'm I'm just wondering if if um I I'm fully prepared to support it, but I but it came Friday, yesterday was a holiday, we've busy through the weekend. I've 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 just wanted to look at a bit more of the details in terms of the unit and that sort of thing. So I'm wondering if if we could just delay.
You're looking at a tableless?
Yes.
Not that much to it.
Yeah, well, I've.
I'm essentially formalizing uh what we've been doing for the last ten years. I I am not privy to my predecessors' emails, unfortunately, so I had to sort of make it up through hearsay and inquiry.
Okay, I've got a, I've got a number, a couple of people who were were inquiring through the beach park. So I'll try to make sure we get those names forward. Um, I I guess what I'm what looking at is, I'm not the whether they're the Capolano model or another model or whatever it is, I'm just hoping to have a have a look at something else. You do have a a clause in there where it says Capolano model or equivalent, or or something similar, or something like that, is that the wording?
Uh, yes, in the policy, uh, so that we're not uh hamstrung by the model.
Yeah.
Point is, we need to know the pricing of the other ones.
Right.
Park benches go from this towards the low end, a sort of Lions Bay speed, uh, up to seven or eight thousand dollars for uh cast iron models that that are used in places where they're sitting on sidewalks and board footings. Um, yeah, I I wouldn't necessarily over uh think this one, this is, this is how we do it now. Um, I need a policy uh to point people towards. Uh, the research is is the 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 cautions that I I were, was given, cautions that I were given, was given by uh specifically uh Vancouver Parks was, um, you have to make sure that people are not able to paint them in tiger stripe. You have to make sure that people are not able to paint them in tiger stripes, zebra stripes, or any kind of stripes. They are not allowed to amend them themselves, they can't start doing plantings, they can't bury ashes. There's a lot of things that people do now, that we didn't need to worry about before, and so, you know, twenty years or more of ad hoc. Approach was fine. The point is, I'd like to give people an idea of what the rules are, where they are, and.
Well, in the spirit of moving forward, let's.
I really think that's more than adequate, it's a policy, it's not cast in stone. It turns out to be something that's not quite working, we can amend it in one council meeting.
Okay, councillor Abbott, you have your hand up.
Yeah, a couple of questions that might help Michael a bit of clarity, because I've read through a couple of questions as well. So I think the intention here is to try to be cost neutral. I would argue that you're not. Because in ten years' time, you know, you've got four hundred and thirty-five bucks for staff labor time, which is probably not going to cover it for ten years. Having said that, I think the odd one was two thousand dollars. So it's a fair increase, I'm happy to, I'm not suggesting changing. Although I do think it's a little, a little light, but I mean, it's a fair.
Yeah, I thought about that, I mean, we're essentially in the park anyway, doing daily maintenance, especially in the summer, you know. We're more or less, most of the time, three hundred and sixty-four days a year, just inspecting the bench to make sure that everything's hunky dory, and. You know, this is the kind of thing that we do, you know, we provide services to. The community, fixing the benches is part and parcel of what we're doing.
I'm just suggesting it's not really cost neutral, I'm fine with, I'm not suggesting me.
Okay.
Just to cover other things up, two other questions. Why, why do you have to make this claim that it's not a memorial and no dates?
Because wording, that gives staff the power to amend wording. What happens apparently is that wording gets pretty morbid. It turns into a gravestone, not a dedication. And we, the warning that we were given, that I was given, is. You've got to realize that everybody going to the beach sees this, or going to the park. And you can't make it too personal, too sad, too. Heartfelt, it's got to be uplifting. Many policies use the term uplifting, but what's uplifting?
Yeah, I just, it's a memorial, it's a dedication, not a memorial, I don't, I don't get it, but okay.
That's helpful.
That's one of the reasons that you don't want dates.
Yeah.
Dates for long and.
I need one last, one last, I understand you're trying to keep conformity, and they all need to be somewhat the same, or the same, other than the wording on, I get all of that. But I think the font size, the must be left justified, not right. That just seems a little, truly on the plaque, you could let people be a little more free of what they say.
No, I provide, they have options, you get to pick.
You get to pick, you're going to decide what they can say.
Yeah, what, they get the wording, yeah, that's a discussion, and if, if. We don't agree, then they appeal to council, and there's provision in the policy for that. But in terms of the layout, the form, as you see.
I'm reading all, I'm at a rate end, okay, all right, okay, I see you're alls in there, I'm reading ends. Okay, all right, okay, one last thing, at the end, the policy number is written as PP, is that a typo? Because it's always P O L.
It's a typo.
Okay.
I mean, if you.
We're not changing the numbering format for our policies as well.
If council is prepared to accept this policy, it'll be amended.
Yeah, as we said, it'll be a P O L.
Okay, councillor Broden, one last question.
I've got one comment as well, please.
Okay.
Okay, pointing, just pointing information, what is the? The bench that's down in Margery Meadows, is that one of these?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, councillor Conliffe?
I'm just wondering if there's some flexibility on the ten years. I think fifteen or even twenty would be, ten years goes by really fast. So, there are some, I know it's a deterrent, I work in the cemetery industry, and I have conversations with people about benches all the time, and. What actually does deter them is the ten-year expiry. If it was twenty, I think you'd have more buy-in.
I don't know about the buy-in, we're not seeking customers. We already have too many benches and too many requests, so as you see, the policy limits the amount.
We need not enough benches. You see too many benches.
Too many requests. We have too many requests.
We have waiting lists.
Yes, we have waiting lists.
Yeah.
So ten years is not a detriment to people, what we do provide for here is that you can renew it. You can make further donation.
So they have first refusal.
Yeah, first refusal on the renewal. So they've got the spot, the problem is that, you know, we have so many slots, and in fact, as you see in here, I put up several more. Where we don't have benches today, we're just trying to accommodate. I've just got a request now, for example, that somebody wants to put one at the trailhead on Ocean View. Sure, maybe, but that's not in this policy, so that we need to come to council.
Okay, any other questions?
Question?
No, okay, we'll call the question all in favor. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks, Sir Burr.
Okay, with that, we'll move to the budget for the second reading. Mr. Chirkoff, thank you. And council members for their continued participation in the budget process, the questions that have come forward, and comments on. As well with Mr. Burr's inputs, it's been quite helpful. So the revised copy here for the second reading reflects all input that I am aware of today. Just to bring a highlight to any significant changes. The tree, dangerous tree budget has been increased from an additional forty thousand to a hundred and forty thousand. For dangerous tree felling in the village, and that is. I guess, part of the ongoing consequences of our most recent incident at the ten tree. Other part is an increase in revenue and an increase in capital expenditure for universal water monitoring of three point. Eight million dollars.
Three point eight.
And so, Mr. Burr, as they work diligently for the province on securing financing for this, he's quite confident that we will receive the funding. And so it's been reflected in this budget. Other amendments have been titles or minor adjustments, but substantially those are the two largest changes.
I think this falls, is still in there.
It's taken up.
It's out there now?
Okay. Okay, any other highlights before councillor's last few questions? No, I believe the package is quite comprehensive, and the emails that have sent out to you all, council, applies the changes there, so. There's any specific that requesting a second reading of the budget moving forward. And it could be the whole meeting next in two weeks. And I would ask that council consider. The capital expenditures coming forward, and how we want to finance them, I have added a. Guesstimate of reserves for any twenty twenty-five at the end of the package there. Currently reflects on drawing on existing reserves to find major projects such as the Cub project, which is. Necessary, and. I have brought to council the tension that we could. Apply our. Loan, or every loans with the MFA. To offset that by about one point eight million dollars, and I guess. Thank councillor Abbott for reminding me that temporary financing was in place. I would suggest that the council deliberate on that and provide some direction as to proceed or not to proceed on that. In my recommendation, I believe that it would be the most financially prudent way to go forward. You get the very beneficial interest rate from the MFA. And without having to have that significant cash outlay rate upfront, we can. Leverage that against our investments with the MFA and its remaining James. So that at least we're even on interest income and interest expense, or actually making money from our existing cash reserves. So that is my recommendation, but that is food for thought for the next meeting. Okay, any questions from council? Councillor Broden?
Just a number of points that were raised by councillor Abbott, and. Will we? Are you going to put those forward?
Well. Okay, so just to be clear, I've got a whole bunch more questions. So now we want to do this, but if we change the second reading tonight, doing it in another meeting, problematic. The question is, you're referring to, actually since prior to the committee of the whole meetings, over two weeks old. Some have been answered, some have been changed, and some were kind of deferred to someone else, so they haven't been answered. So I don't know if we want to try to go and answer those now, but we're doing second reading, I think there's a few things we need to clean up. And that's some of them. And we only got, only got those answers back on Friday, so I went through them again, I haven't had a chance, no, it's along the chain.
If I could.
Yeah, Mr. Blackwell.
Thank you, listening to the comments from councillor Abbott. What I would suggest is you may wish to punt this to a more specifically budget-oriented committee of the hall coming up shortly, where you can. Take more time to massage the details of this, so you can be comfortable with this, rather than rush a second reading. It's, of course, that decision rests with council, but that's an option for you.
Okay, councillor Abbott, if you've got more questions, do you want to compile those? Provide them to Mr. Chirkoff and Mr. Blackwell, and we come back and revisit this, or do you want to push forward and go for a second reading?
I, I don't mind compiling the detailed questions as I've done before. And maybe we can answer the ones that we've answered yet. So that would be helpful, I do want to speak about the three. High-level or larger items that have just been brought up. And I think I'd like to do those now. And then I've just got one technical question that you can maybe help with, on page. Twenty-two, the beginning of the budget. We've got transfer from reserves. Three point seven four nine. If I go to the summary sheet on page sixty-five. There's a different number, shouldn't those be the same number?
Oh, it's, so the one at the end is. It's going to be slightly different, because we have different ins and outs here, with transfers from the. To the wastewater treatment plant reserve, the infrastructure left lobby, and then goes back into the transfer from two. It's a little off.
I was badly to follow it, so maybe that's part of the detailed discussion, I'm okay with it, part of the detail, but I was begging to follow it. As to the three things you just mentioned, I just want to comment first of all, on this idea of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. For so-called danger trees. I, this is not a question to you, this is a question to council. I, I have a significant issue with this idea that we have to spend a hundred and forty, actually, I thought it was a hundred and fifty-five in here, wasn't it?
Oh, there was the original budget of twelve thousand five hundred?
Whether it's a hundred and forty or a hundred and fifty-five, I still do not believe this, every other municipality in metro, well. Wide of the metro is trying to restore their tea, tree canopy, protecting what they got. And we seem to be going on a very different path. And I'm not comfortable with this idea that residents, and we've already had two that have put their hands up. Can suggest they've got danger trees, and then we're going to go pay to take them down. I am firmly against that, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I'm, I'm in the sand on this budget for me. I think council needs to discuss that, I think it's a bad idea. For A, the reasons I've just mentioned, and B, I just, it's going to be a slippery slope. With residents, you know, just coming forward and wanting trees removed for views, that's all it's going to be. If I could.
Sorry, with. Councillor Broden?
Okay.
Mr. Blackwell, we'll come right to you afterwards.
I'm a bit concerned about this being stylized as residents are coming forward and asking for trees to be removed to improve their view. If we're talking about a tree that has been determined to be dangerous by an arborist. That's, that's an entirely different matter. We don't have to look very far, we go to Horseshoe Bay on January second of two thousand and twenty-two. Where we had a couple killed when a tree fell on their house. We, we can go to December the fourteenth of last, of last year. Same date that we had the slide, a tree fell on a woman in Coquitlam, I believe it was, and she was killed, and a week later. On the twenty-first, I believe, of December, a tree fell on someone. So, we, if we're not, we're not. Piggy, piggy responding to whim of individuals, the people who live in their homes. If they believe that the tree is dangerous, the tree is on village property, the art, there's a process that's involved in that. If the arborist determines that it is in fact a danger tree, then we have a real. Not only a moral obligation, but a legal obligation to ensure that some kind of. Remedies is offered, because otherwise. We are, if a tree has been identified as dangerous, and it falls, and there's property or. Or injury. We have to be.
We're going to go to Mr. Blackwell.
I have a comment too as well.
Okay, Mr. Blackwell, we'll go to you, and then councillor Conliffe has not commented, we'll come to her, and then we'll go back to councillor Abbott. Mr. Blackwell?
Thank you, just as a reminder to council, council has begun the preliminary steps. With respect to a conversation around risk management. Generally, the intention is to get increasingly deeper into this topic. My hope is to have a representative from the municipal. Insurance Association of B C, who are our insurance provider. To meet with council and talk about risk management across the gamut. For council, the goal here is to sort of set the stage for council with regard to information. So council has a fulsome understanding of its legal obligation. And is then able to set by resolution its preferred threat thresholds for any given. Risk, so I just, in summary, that's a process, you've had. You dipped your toes in the water on that a few weeks ago, and that's going to continue, this is a significant area. Of financial concern and exposure to the municipality. So I want to make sure the council has all the information I can provide it, so it's in the best position to make the right decision for the community.
Okay, thank you, councillor Conliffe, and then we'll go to councillor Abbott.
Yeah, I, I, you know, appreciate the. Education we're getting in risk management, and obviously, we need to protect our residents from any sort of danger that occurs on municipal land. I just would prefer to see this come to council in. The time that we do need to address the situation without having a hundred and fifty thousand dollar carte blanche. Account just to be drawn off of without any sort of further wholesome discussion, council oversight, so. I mean, with the Botana Creek disaster, we had a special council meeting, we reallocated funds, it took all of about. Seven minutes, and I think that in the case that there was something that deemed to be that hazardous, we could pull together something pretty quickly. I'm just not in favor of having it sitting there just. You know, up for grabs on a whim. But we can have a further discussion at the council of the whole.
Okay, councillor Abbott?
I'm glad the CEO brought up risk management, and more importantly, risk tolerance. So as we all know, everyone has a different risk tolerance, we need to decide what it is for the village. To these arborist reports that we've seen so far, and that have been argued are danger trees. Without exception, and includes all the ones in the beach park as well, without exception. The highest danger we have seen in these reports is a moderate risk, and the moderate risk is described of a limb falling on someone. It's not described as a tree falling on someone's house. Now, if a tree was sick to the point where it was going to fall on someone else, completely different discussion. If you're going to decide you're going to take trees down because of a moderate risk of a limb falling on someone's head in the storm. I would argue, we should be educating people about what to do in storms. So that's all, it is all about risk tolerance. The other point is, if residents want a tree taken down, and they apply for whatever reason, they get to pay for it. That's what the tree by law says, and now the suggestion that we're going to go do it for them. If an arborist says there's a moderate risk, I completely disagree. We just need to have that discussion about what a risk tolerance is, and not. We we guess we need to have that discussion about what a risk tolerance is, and not every tree, they can shed a limb because this is one of them, and they have moderate risk, need to be taken down.
Okay, so thank you very much, councillor Abbott. Uh, if there's no more further comments, we'll move on. I think this is a topic that we'll revisit again, so uh, thank you very much, Mr. Blackwell.
Trees are a challenge.
Okay, uh, there was items.
There was, I said, there was, there was a few things that drove it up, I thought we talked about the trees were the first one. Um, second one is water metering. Um, and I don't know whether it's uh, whether the, um, sorry. Public work manager comes to us too easily, director of operations. Um.
Earl, do you wanna try?
I was supposed to join us in this one. It's it's unusual. It's un- it's unusual to see, it's unusual to see in a budget um a project and grant funding that's speculative, even if it's, you know, even if we are confident. That that's unusual for me. Uh, avenues certainly in 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 my base, so and 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 it's a really large number, three point eight million dollars. So it really shows, it makes the whole budget look odd to me, especially if we don't get it. So I'm not sure, what what is the motivation for putting putting it in now? We could, certainly if we get the grant, we're gonna go ahead, pass a special resi- resolution, I would hope and do it. Now, but what is the point of putting it in the budget now when it's only speculative? Because it does make expenditure look way higher than what would be if you didn't get that grant.
Okay, just for clarity, it's put in the budget, uh, I believe, three point eight million dollar grant and three point eight million dollar expenditure, so.
Yeah, the the net is here, I believe the answer is gonna be PSAP, and so I will actually uh hand it to the the financial officer. Why why is in the financials?
Okay, Mr. Chirkoff, maybe you can explain to us why it's there? We haven't received the grant yet, but we feel confident or uh, Mr. Burr feels confident that we will receive that grant?
We, um, it's more than likely um that we will receive the grant, um, reflected in our budget. Um, the budget can be amended, um, again, if uh something doesn't happen to our expectations. Uh, and that's what it is, this is for transparency for the community as far as projects are presented. Uh, and it just shows that direction forward, uh, reflection of what's going on um behind the scenes.
Okay, Mr. Burr, you.
Yeah, I mean, uh, that's that's correct. I I I would point out that the the PSAP accounting rules require that you reflect capital funding as revenue, which I've always thought was a little odd, um, because this is not really income, this this is capex, um, but that's how public standards accounting board requires it.
And and as just a callary to Mr. Burr's comments, uh, this will be the same with the funding of expenditures and income from the Botany Creek incident, we'll have a separate line item for revenue on reimbursement from the government and a separate line item expenses for expenditures.
Yeah, uh, you you could argue that that doesn't actually uh provide a fair reflection of the finances of the village, but that's that's what they require, and there was.
Mr. Burr, what's uh, what sort of timeline you're gonna, I'm not gonna hold you to it, but when do you think you may hear some response?
Well, to be perfectly honest, I had hoped that I would be able to uh provide a report to council tonight. Um, but that's not not currently uh their timing. My understanding is that we are in in very good position to obtain the grant, but you will notice that it's not the number that I had before, which was four point eight million dollars. Um, I was asked to take a pretty severe haircut, which we did. Um, any more of a haircut than this, I would not feel confident in recommending the project to council, because I wouldn't be sure that we wouldn't be left holding the baby to certain extent. Even this is is taking a thousand dollars per installation off by essentially hiring two temporary workers for two years. Um, that was the way that we achieved their requirements, I think I announced to you that uh they they determined that our proposal was the most complete, the most sophisticated, and the most expensive um per meter. And so they they said I had to, I I have to knock some numbers off. Any less than this would be unrealistic, and and I had made to the point that if if other people come in at a much lower per unit cost, I don't know how realistic that 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 would be, because these are pretty good numbers. Actual cost of a meter and the box that the meter goes in and the piping that you use to connect it is about six hundred dollars. It's not very much.
Okay, well, how, sorry, and how many other municipalities have ninety percent of their residents on a thirty degree slope on rock?
That's why ours needs to be so much more expensive, because not only are we steep, uh, we have very rocky escalations, because the they were, the 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 original lines were not put in with the the best practice, uh, specifically the private side. So any lower than that, frankly, we don't want, we don't want it. And so it's it's, will we get it at at this price, five thousand two hundred dollars per hole? Because as I said, the meters themselves are minimum cost. Amazing, you see, I had an ultimate by today.
That's exciting, and so the supply's marker, that's great. Um, any further questions before we move on?
What was the third thing on, what was my train of thought?
Uh, we talked about uh danger trees, um, universal water metering, um.
The.
Capex.
You said you wanted.
Borrowing.
You wanted.
Borrowing.
I already bought. Yeah, I saw it to write by what was, okay, one one.
You talked about the borrowing, uh, we could actually stand to uh to uh gain more interest than the cost of this borrowing.
Whatever, more than pay and interest by borrowing over twenty, thirty years for the water mains, um, one point eight million. If I can uh invest it now, um, instead of having to spend it right out, it's gonna be net zero at least. If not, we can make some more money. Um, and I think it's just a a good practice to leverage what we can as far as interest um and retain reserves, uh, as we have. It's a significant capital spend, and typically, significant capital expenditures are financed through debt.
And the number was one point eight billion?
Yeah, that was, uh, yes, that was available under the temporary financing bylaw.
That's what we have available, the project is one point three.
Yeah, that that's my question is, would we go for one point three, or why are we talking one point eight? That's just what we have a double.
That's a hit.
So it would, okay, so we would obviously take what we need.
Yeah, it's not currently reflected in the budget. Um, I was requesting direction from council and and the council, uh, to make a dis- uh, a.
A direction, yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, uh, any questions?
Um, yeah, just further on that, um, I think the last meeting, I took a note myself to go check the resolutions log and make sure that that resolution you I referred to, that you were saying that I reminded you of, actually did go out past twenty twenty-five. I haven't done that, did someone else do that? Okay, yeah, maybe we shouldn't just take my memory as word, because there was a set time period we extended it for, please, Fred can remember. Um, and if we need to do it again, we need to do it again, it's a simple process.
Yeah.
It was a simple council resolution, to extend, not to create, that's the difference, you don't have to get to residents. So someone should check that, I I could find it on the log as well.
Yeah, I mean, I I did take a look at a reg- uh regulation regarding the use or the extension of the temporary um borrowing permit. Uh, there was no uh expiry after the temporary that I could find.
Okay.
But I can call M F A, um, presuming that we wanna proceed in that direction to make sure that either we have to re- apply for it or renew it, or it's just still fine.
Is the, is it, is the consensus at council, this is what we wanna do? I would think, I think we have somewhat consensus, we wanna borrow to do the cap project.
Uh, but.
I think we have a consensus, yeah.
I think it makes sense.
Sounds like a good direction.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right, uh.
One one last thing, still on the same point, um. One of the loan interest rates went up by like twenty thousand dollars. You need to one of my other questions.
Right, so I did reply to your uh um email in N S C C council. So the M F A readjusts every few years, um, our interest rates.
Yeah.
Uh, that's part of which one we have, um, is the uh actuarial gain or loss, to kind of like smooth it out. But our actual interest payments went up uh for, that's one oh four of the water uh water loans.
In my recollection, my recollection that if the interest rates go to up past a certain threshold, they increase your your rate. If they go down, you keep paying the same amount and you just pay it off sooner.
If the principal rate and principal amount is um, uh, oh, gee, I was just looking at it. Uh, but they they, I I can, I'm more than happy to send the uh revised loan acquisition schedules from the province. It it definitely is, they readjusted the amount they each each uh period.
But they didn't adjust the other ones, they all stayed the same.
No doubt, it was just that one, so I'm not quite sure why they.
I think from what I remember, I was told before, is uh, when when you, and this goes to your point of that, can we make, can we be net positive on loaning money? The way I was told before, and you can go check it out on the real, is that if they go up past a certain threshold, they actually charge you more, so that you finish on due time. If they go down, or they continue to go down, you keep paying the same amount, and that's why you're not seeing the older ones at a higher rate go down, but you end up paying it off three months, six months, whatever months earlier. And I think that's the explanation, I don't know that for a fact, but it's kind of our record.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
So when you're talking about how much money you can make, you've gotta bear that in mind.
That's right, uh, it it is partially baked into the manifesto, uh, uh, gain or loss that we record. Uh, so we kind of supposed to kind of even it out, but that that that's a very good, uh, very good point. Um, before kind of, I I will uh take a look, uh, give or dive into that specifically, uh, and see what, if there's any um upside versus exposure for us, uh.
Yeah, if you take it out of time, the loan interest rate, expect to pay more.
Okay, uh, councillor Brown, one more question, then we'll uh table uh the budget for second reading for later date.
Okay, um, so currently, you your rep staff is recommending six, five percent increase in the overall budget or six percent increase in the overall budget?
Um, it was five percent for utilities, and it was five percent for property tax.
Okay, and uh could you tell me which other communities have a infrastructure levy? I'm not clear on that.
It has been difficult to suss that out uh through financial statements about the communities. I look at everybody's budget in our lower mainland, uh, they all call it different things, or they just they get into like a capital um uh reserve funding line item. Uh, we are one of the outliers, where we have a specific line item for the infrastructure levy.
So if I'm in Burnaby, do it, then.
You're paying.
There's no, there's there's no line item that says, okay, here's your tax rate, here it is. And now, and now we're gonna put a ten percent levy on top of that for infrastructure.
The challenge is that we're a very small community, and and it's in the interest of transparency, we break out a lot of things that our communities don't do. Uh, when you're looking at a capital budget in the billions, um, this kind of thing is various in there, yeah. But again, like I said, I had, I I I did pull uh members of uh G F O uh A B C. Um, I had responses, and one was, yes, we have from uh Prince George, we, yeah, perhaps over line. One was, uh, yeah, we do it for sure, but uh it's uh buried in, it's baked into our overall tax rate. So the, I don't believe that we are unique in funding a reserve, everybody has a reserve.
Oh, no, I totally, totally understand that, yeah.
How it's presented to the public, maybe combined with the overall tax rate increase, they say, instead of saying we do five percent, well, we're gonna do four point six or five point two percent, because that includes the infrastructure portion. And and then when they actually do their accounting, that point two percent is specifically goes to the infrastructure reserve.
Okay, folks, um. Just for me, just just to clarify though, I'm just trying to understand the, um, uh, we have a, we have a chart here on page twenty-five, and it's got the the tax rates of of the other communities, Bell Carable and Ireland, Vancouver, Port Moody, et cetera. And and I'm just trying to understand whether our our tax rate, how to compare these. If after we've taken our five percent tax increase, we then take another ten percent levy and put it on top of that.
Oh, that's a very good question.
So I'm just trying to.
I would.
Understand how like.
I don't put ten percent on top of the five percent, I don't do that.
It's ten percent of five percent, of my five of five.
Ten percent of our tax rate.
The uh, for us, not not collected on behalf of, yeah, I I can represent that, um, showing with the all-in with the infrastructure instead of having it as a separate line item. So you can show a few of the apples to apples in that table.
That's what I'm trying to to understand, when I'm trying to compare these.
Yeah.
We 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 work work all through, and then we have another, we have another hole by the way, right?
So I I.
And it is, it's ten percent of our tax taxes.
The rest.
Ten percent of the taxes is the levy.
Yes.
You calculate the taxes.
Yeah.
And then you take ten percent of those, you put it on top.
No, but you told me this is probably an increase from one year to next, ten percent.
Saying, yeah, that's what I'm saying, so I'm trying to understand how that, how we can compare our tax rate when when whether these these tax rates reflect the the infrastructure uh funding that they're putting, they're putting aside. So I'm just looking at how I can compare this.
Joe, I may.
Yeah.
Um, I will uh rejig that uh that table for you, um, basically an all-in rate with the infrastructure levy, which I think you have a very salient point, that in my opinion, everybody's doing this, it's just not so transparent as we are trying to be.
Well, definitely, yeah.
But on the assumption that those publicly listed rates include what they're now setting aside for infrastructure, um, putting it into that table with better, where apples to apples, it's it's a very small percentage, to be honest, but I I will do that.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Uh, councillor Abbott, we're gonna go one more question, and then we're gonna move to the committee, move this to the committee of the whole.
Yeah, okay, when when, I just, I think there's a misunderstanding here, we're talking about the increases each community does, not the tax rate. We're not comparing tax rates, tax rates are set, are set by first of all, how much money we do, and then and then and then we divide that by the number of people in value of houses. See, he said tax rate, he talking about the increase.
That's right.
So if we increase by three percent, everything increases with the difference, irrelevant how we break it out compared to another community. So the increases you're comparing, not the rates.
Um, I, I wanna believe right the point, but what I believe councillor Brown is asking about is we show, we reflect in our budget a five percent property tax increase, however, um, if I added that uh infrastructure levy is like five point one percent, five point two, right? So that's where the.
Okay, folks, we're gonna move this to the committee of the whole, okay? Uh, thank you very much. Okay, councillor Conliffe, uh, one question before we move on?
Uh, I can hold off till the committee of the whole, it's just the, I I like the transparency that we call it an infrastructure levy. I know that it helps us when it comes to writing grants, to show that we are consciously putting funds away specifically for infrastructure. So however we wanna break it down to compare apples to apples is fine, but i- it's a good thing. Thanks, Joe.
All right, with that, we'll table the budget to the, for the second reading to the committee of the whole. Uh, next item is eight point one point three action item logs. Is there any items that council wishes to discuss on the action log? Any specific items?
Um.
And that's on page sixty-seven of your agenda.
Yeah, I do, um, just one second. Can't define now.
Page six.
Now, I found it, I found the log, but I can't find the one to discuss.
Where's the page sixty-six? If I could.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, ideally, you know, it would be great if if council could get into the practice of discussing those action item lists in a committee of the hall. Uh, otherwise, have the action list on council agenda only for information, or if there is a specific resolution or direction council wants to provide. That would be sort of the ideal process.
Okay.
I think that's.
Thanks for that. Uh, if council is fine with that, unless you've got something specific you'd like to discuss?
Um, well, the one item I was, I was hoping to get some follow-up on was the item um about going to the province about our grant funding, um, being a small community and and a rural community. Um, I think a while ago, Ross, you told us that uh you had approached them and then got a bit of a, which I think was a bit of a mixed answer, because it wasn't really answering the question, didn't answer the question, and you were gonna come back to us with that. Um, we've been hearing for a while.
Okay, councillor Abbott, which item was that on the action log?
This is a question, fine.
Uh, three, two, one.
Three, two. Three, two.
Staff to investigate whether the village planning can apply for grants and funding as a rural community.
Yeah. Excellent. Yeah, thank you.
Ross, the action three, two, one. Any progress on that?
Uh it's it's certainly in sequence. I haven't had a chance to get to it, particularly over the last little while. It's been rather uh I've been consumed with a couple of rather significant issues. Uh it's not slipped off my radar. Uh I just need to find the time to get to it.
Okay.
So it's in process.
Any other questions?
On the link.
No. Okay, uh with that, as as uh Mr. Blackwell suggested, we can discuss further in the committee of the whole. If we want to expand this list or or touch on some of the items. Uh with that, uh item eight point two committees, nothing to report, uh eight point two point one trees views landscape committee. Uh do we have a mover? The council approved tree cutting permit application number one, three, three, subject to the following for scope of work detailed in the application, the applicant must clean up and remove all associated debris and notify municipality as soon as possible after cutting to advise that this is being done. Uh number three, the tree cutting permit shall be valid for one year, subject to confirmation prior to any cutting or repeat cutting within that period of one, compliance with the bylaw restrictions regarding bird nesting season two, if working from the road, a traffic control plan approved by public works, three damaged deposit, arborist slash contractors, works A P C certificate and insurance and compliance with the municipality requirements and any other municipal bylaw requirements. Uh do we have a mover for that?
So moved.
Okay, second.
Yes, we can.
Okay, moved by councillor Broughton, seconded by councillor Abbott, uh discussion, and that is on page. Don't be out on that.
Well, sixty seven.
Sixty eight.
Sixty eight. There it is.
Okay.
Page sixty eight, the staff report. Uh background is three committee met at site uh two fifty Ocean Road on February twelfth, twenty twenty five. Uh there's also some documents in there on the neighbors.
And the resolution was page sixty seven, sorry, seventy six.
Okay, any comments, questions?
No.
No? Okay, I'll call the question on favor.
I. Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, thank you for that. Uh item eight point two point two Curly Stewart Memorial Trust Committee, uh motion that council reappoint Jennifer Heatherington, Nicole Sproul, Hugo Van Hoop, Stratten, Kit McLean uh to the Curly Stewart Memorial Trust Fund Award Committee for twenty twenty five. And the council authorized the committee to be formed as part, as per the terms of reference and the council authorized an increase in the award to fifteen hundred dollars.
If I could.
Yes.
Um normally council appointments are discussed and closed. Um if there's any need, if councils of the opinion there's any need to do so, um you may want to avail yourself of closed. If not, no harm to foul.
Okay, uh does anyone want to move this into closed?
Okay, I was about to make that was one going to be my opening statement. So we've never had a rejection before, so that's why I suggested I didn't ask the question. Suggested put it in open because did we even give a close meeting just for this? Um yeah, I was I was going to make the same.
It's time sensitive as well.
It's time sensitive.
Any objection to moving forward in the open?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. Any comments? Sorry, we need a mover?
I, yeah, I'll I'll move it.
Councillor Abbott moved, councillor Broughton seconded, uh all in favor?
Just one, Michael, May sixth deadlines for student application, I highlighted that in yellow. Is that what what your committee is doing?
Lions Bay Community Scholarship Foundation is the first Tuesday of May. So if May sixth is the first Tuesday of May.
Okay, now I just want to be consistent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They don't get mixed up in a day late.
Yeah.
And you have to kick someone out because they're a day late.
Sure, that's the case, yeah.
Okay. And then I just want to draw counsel to attention to the fact that we're now increasing it to fifteen hundred dollars. Um we have a a nice positive bank balance that's been growing. Um this year it was the uh, I can maybe thank all the residents that participated and pardon for it. This year was the uh the Christmas tree fundraiser and we're going to keep doing that every year. We think that's a a good bang for uh for our effort. So we're going to keep doing that and uh um for that reason, uh taxpayers don't pay any of this. We've increased it from five hundred to fifteen hundred in this term. Um and uh, you know, we raised the money to to give it to the kids, not to not to grow bank balances. So that's why we're doing that. So yeah, it's a big positive, but I am drawing your attention to the fact that that's an increase as to what was previously approved.
Okay, uh all in favor?
Yes. Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you very much. Okay, uh with that, we'll move to item eight point three point one, and that's Lions Bay Bird Friendly uh motion. Uh we have a motion that council resolves formally accept the outcome of a community vote for an official bird and declare the chosen bird to be the avian symbol for the village of Lions Bay.
Like good.
Yeah.
Um it it's a little technical nu- nu- nuance. Uh without getting into too much detail, um I council is not permitted to pass a resolution that limits the future decision making of council. So with that in mind, my recommendation is you just add the word consider. That way, if somebody, if if they, if the um particular the um what am I looking for? The survey comes back with ostrich, for example, and council doesn't want the ostrich. There's there's some ability to not be held to that. So my recommendation is just to in- in- include the word consider.
So change uh except for consider?
Yeah, consider accepting.
Um, okay, I think Charlie spoke to and explained it really well. The request was the council would approve the outcome at meeting date, which is.
May ten.
Was it my tenth?
Well, May ten was the was the uh uh the day the.
It's not a council meeting. It'd have to be then.
No, no, May ten was was when it was going to be announced and something like that. Sorry.
May twentieth, yeah, I find it. Winning word will be submitted. It says here the winning bir- bird will be submitted for ratification by council at the regular council meeting on May twentieth. That's what the wording is in in the report here. Um is that? Is that satisfied? Is that sound better, Ross, if we use those words? Um I think that the the intention is this is not council's decision. We're not asking council to make a decision. We're asking council to support the resident decision.
Uh, hey, uh Mr. Blackwell, maybe you can offer Mark a better explanation or further explanation. I think what you're trying to say is is that that committees are recommendations and the council has to make the the final decision. Is that?
That's true. No, what I'm saying is a ca- council today can't pass a wholeless bowl, a resolution that gives all this bolus authority to something that will happen or may happen in the future. You know, I used an ostrich as a crazy example just to sort of highlight, you know, i- if it comes back that the ostrich is the preferred uh sort of bird, obviously it's out there. I understand that, but I'm trying to make a point. Council may not want to be bound by the resolution that says we will ratify that. So what I'm saying is uh now it could be in relation to anything, sewer systems, water systems, anything. It doesn't matter. The the principle is the council should not bind a future decision, bind itself uh uh bind itself in respect of a future uh situation by a resolution. So in other words, what would be the 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 best is if the outcome of that survey is presented to council and then council moves and seconds uh adoption of that or whatever. That's the perfect one. But in an absence of that, uh you know, to to stick handle it by saying, you know, sort of improving principle sort of idea, consider approval. Uh sort of gives the nod to the direction council's going without quote unquote binding the hands of council.
Yeah. Okay, councillor Broughton and then councillor Abbott.
Yeah, I think I think the the wording, the the ratification is, does not assume that you will, that you must ratify. Um but the way, but the other wording that that was just read out to us that was talking about the committing us to the future and it's not and 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 uh so it's not a lack of confident, I've covered, I'm confident, completely confident in in the process. But but it does, it is an odd thing to do to to say we're going to vote now, but that how we will vote.
Okay, uh councillor Abbott?
Okay, so let me just explain my my suggestion, my friendly amendment to my own resolution here.
Um you can't be a friendly to yourself.
I am friendly to myself. I love myself. That's natural. Um uh what else I'm going to say, the council formally resolves formally to consider, as Ross preferred.
Yeah.
And then at the end of the sentence, you add and, and then you go down to the third paragraph, last sentence. And the winning bird will be submitted for ratification by council at the regular council meeting on May twentieth. So then then we can get rid of ostriches if we need to.
Mr. Blackwell, that sounds appropriate. What do you think?
Yeah, I wouldn't specify the council meeting, just in case you need a special council meeting. I would say at a council meeting.
Yeah, well, we. Yeah, we need to do.
Set the date. You you can set the date, honor before May whatever. And that gives you guys a bit more flexibility if for whatever reason you need a different council meeting.
Or yeah, we might have a special meeting.
Okay. Are you comfortable with that, councillor Abbott?
Sure, regular council meeting.
Okay.
Before the twentieth.
Before the twentieth, and it needs to be done by a deadline. If it's before May twentieth, that's fine. Honor before is fine.
Crystal, you have that?
Uh, yeah, that resolves to formally consider the outcome of a community vote for an official bird and declare the chosen bird to be the avian symbol of the village of Lions Bay and the winning bird will be ratified at the regular council meeting on or before May twentieth, twenty twenty five.
Okay.
All in favor?
I. Yes.
Opposed? Motion carried.
It's longer than I expected.
All right, if I could.
Yeah.
Would you give artistic license to remove the word regular council meeting? Just call it council meeting. Keep you guys more spoke. Is that okay?
Special council. It's special, yeah.
That's good.
All right, fine.
It's a very friendly amendment.
Okay, uh item eight point four, uh RCM, eight point four point one, R C M T report. Take that as read. Any comments?
No.
No? Okay. Uh item number nine resolutions, U B C M uh attendance and allocation of funds, the motion that council select attendees and approve associated costs of the U B C M conference.
If I could.
Yeah, Mr. Blackwell.
Thank you. So uh as councillor uh Broughton has indicated, council received a uh correspondence for the from the L M L G A. Uh you've also received correspondence pertaining to the U B C M. Um this issue of attendance and the cost was a matter that was discussed last year. Um and I think it's important that council provide direction with regard to uh who is attending what. Uh the L M L G A is held at Whistler this year as it was last. It is, I think, registration fee is six hundred fifty dollars plus, I believe it's three hundred dollars a night for hotel, so call it a thousand dollars. Uh plus pu- per kilometer distance charges and whatever else. So it's it's not a small commitment. Um and the same applies to the U B C M. Uh U B C M is in Victoria this year. I would imagine the price is going to be in the same vicinity as it was last year, around about a thousand dollars. Uh unlike last year, uh it's not downtown, so you're not going to be able to drive there. It's Victoria. So the question is um twofold, threefold. Who, which, what's, what sort of budget does council want to allocate to this? Which means how many council members does council want to send to one or both of these? And the other piece is um it's one thing to attend, which is very important with regard to networking, understanding emerging emerging trends in governance and, you know, the full gamut that you know about. Uh U B C M in particular advocacy, there could be minister meetings and so forth. Uh but above and beyond that, uh there is the opportunity again this year to avail yourself of um resolutions that you want debated at the L M L G A, which if successful, get punted on to the U B C M or alternatively directly to the U B C M. So I would recommend that whether or not people uh count, any member of council uh chooses to go to either one of these. Uh council should nonetheless consider whether or not it wants to craft any resolutions for the L M L G A or the U B C M. And if so, maybe setting aside some time at the at the next committee, the whole to um um just providing staff direction to to give, so so we can start developing some uh rest draft was a resolutions for your consideration. It would be ideal to sort out the L M L G A soon because I can get the registration is uh the early bird res- registration is not open for very much longer. Um so the sooner the better on that. U B C M is, there's more time for.
Okay, uh thank you for that, Mr. Blackwell. I think uh definitely some direction uh from staff would be uh helpful. But also uh some resolutions to take for whoever is attending, and we did this for the U B C M. So I think the L G M A um maybe crafting some resolutions to uh take to that conference would be helpful. Uh councillor Brown?
Councillor Kynl has indicated her interest in the L G.
In L.
In L M L G A. Um and uh in in light of the fact that they have provided us with significant amount of support. I think we should really have a presence there. Um I received the email back from Shannon's story. And she was just saying, there's some big things to discuss this year, uh reform for the local government act. And um and and also council remuneration and other concerns. So there's some significant issues they wanted to discuss. So I I would hope that at least maybe two councillors would would be able to go to that, if if we have a presence there. And as well as the U B C M, I think U B C M is incredibly important and both these organizations have been very, very supportive of of our council as as we've struggled.
Okay, um I would put my hand up to attend. I know councillor Kynl's interested. I I would also be interested. I know I I put forward the uh uh some legislative changes to the U B C M uh back in twenty twenty three. And if uh the L M L G A is also accepting some suggestions, I'd love to uh also attend and and take that brief with me. So.
If I could.
Yeah, Mr. Blackwell.
What uh what I'm seeking here is a formal resolution from council with regard to the number of council members allocated to the L M L G A and the number of councillors allocated to the U B C M. Uh following that, if individually you can email me uh resolution topics that you would like to see debated at the L L M L G A or U B C M, I will craft uh some standard draft policies for discussion at the next committee, the whole.
Okay, uh councillor, we'll go to councillor Abbott and then we'll come back to councillor Brown. Councillor Abbott?
Um, yeah, so as I said before, I'm a a fan of uh us splitting this up. So we, I don't think we can afford to send everyone to every meeting. Maybe somewhere between, I don't know, twelve to fifteen thousand dollars for each of these events. Maybe close to twelve, but it's not going to be small money. So I think we should certainly decide who goes to which one. Or for now, Ross wants us to decide how many are going. Um last year when the U B C M was in Van, downtown Vancouver, it was a whole lot simpler and cheaper. I, at the U B C M, uh the intention is for us to submit the uh um the motion for the portable portable water treatment plants that we've been talking about since last year through the the I C and the I C's been, we've been working on it and uh working out who's talking to who and starting the networking, trying to get that going. Um so, yeah, if I if I didn't go to that one, someone else would have to present it. But if I uh forget to go to one, I guess, and we don't want, do you want to just name some people? I'll probably put my hand up for that one.
Okay, um I think uh Mr. Blackwell suggested maybe we just identify that, uh do we want uh two councillors going to each meeting, three councillors? Okay, uh I'm comfortable with sending up to two or yes, the U B C M, I think uh it's always valuable. We've seen that, but it was in Vancouver. Next year is in Victoria. So L G M A, uh I'd be, I'll my hand up for two to that and two to the U B C M. So.
If I'm.
Others?
Councillor Kynl.
Councillor Kynl?
Yeah, just I I I'll attend the L G M L A. I've attended, this would be my third or fourth. So um I'm happy to give up my seat at the U B C M for another councillor.
Okay. Uh just going around the table, are we comfortable with the two attending each? Okay, uh, just going around the table, are we comfortable with, uh, two attending each?
Two's fine.
No, I think, I think, um, depending, I think we could have up to three to the UBCM, recognizing that, that, that it will be will be expensive, but, uh, in terms of, but in terms of the connections, the connection to government, which we may well need at that point in time, I, I just think it could be up to three, and not necessarily that we, three would have to go, but, um.
Mister Blackwell, what's your, uh, feedback on that? Councillor Brown is suggesting up to three, but, you know, no, uh, requirement that we have to have three.
Here's me having a new councillor.
Thank you. So, um, my suggestion is, UBCM, both are important, UBCM is the, is the big deal, it's the big show. I think, uh, three is a good number, at least to budget for. Depending on resolutions of this council, depending on what the agenda is looking like, depending on whether there's any ministerial meetings that are scheduled, you may decide as it gets closer to actually register only two. But if you budget for three, at least there's the correct amount of money set aside.
Okay.
That's what I encourage.
Uh, and this is something we can discuss in more detail at the committee of the whole, uh, do, do you need a resolution on this, this evening?
Just a quick question regarding the LMLGA. Um, if, if there was specific topics on, on a day, is it possible to attend for a session? Is there a session fee or something like that? Because I, I certainly wouldn't see, you know, six hundred and fifty dollars and, but, but because it's in Whistler, if, if there was, if there was a day that was really, it was really useful for, for a councillor to be at, for me to be at, for example, uh, that, that, uh, is that, is that, are you aware, is that, is that an option?
To the chair?
Yeah, Mister Blackwell?
Thank you, uh, typically there is. I can't tell you with any certainty with the LMLGA, there is with the UBCM. Uh, what I would tell you about the UBCM is it's shocking, the, the, the day price. You might as well almost just pay the whole shot relative to the cost of going for one day, but I will look into that and confirm and report back to council.
Great.
Okay, uh, council comfortable with table in this then?
Sounds like this we're beginning.
Okay. All right.
We're gonna talk about these.
We can talk about it at the committee at whole and.
Yeah, it just, in regards to the LGL, uh, May, the early bird is the thirty-first of March, so if a decision, we need a resolution passed, um, we might just wanna pass in up to three. Just so we can go ahead, because if we miss the deadline, we're gonna be losing money.
All right, uh, do we have a motion to, uh, approve up to three, and we're going to hear back from Mister Blackwell, and we can make this decision?
With two, but.
I, I think, I, I think, I'd prefer two, to be honest, I mean, I mean, he gives much damage, two is three. And now the council is confiding to the two.
Okay, and we'll add that, uh, uh, Mister Blackwell, our staff is also gonna make some suggestions on some potential resolutions and for discussion, okay?
Well, if I could, if I can get council to do that, email me the topics that you would like to see forward to TBCM and or LMG, LMLGA, and I will draft draft policies to, to, for your discussion.
Okay, so, okay.
Have we accepted two to the LMLGA at this point?
Yeah, let's pass the motions.
So then you can go ahead and book those.
Two to, two to both is what I was suggesting.
Okay.
Um, I would, yeah, I think we need more discussion, because I think up to three, keep it open. Uh, it's gonna be dependent on what topics and what business needs to be attended to, in my opinion.
Yeah.
So I'm comfortable with leaving that, taking that down.
Yeah, I, I think, if we could just go with the L- LMLGA at this point, and we can discuss the other one. With more.
All right, do we have a motion to move that up to two, uh, representatives, uh, will be uh, sponsored or permitted to go to the LMLGA?
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a second? Move by councillor Brown? Do we have a second? Seconded by councillor Abbott, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, thank you. Uh, with that.
One further, one further point on this, um, so is just councillors attending, staff and not going? Is it correct?
To the chair?
Yeah.
Uh, thank you, um, I don't really foresee the need to go to the LMLGA. Uh, certainly, uh, I don't think I can necessarily bring the value that justifies it. Um, uh, but things can change, if council is, uh, becomes aware of information that that suggests that that might not be the best thing, then there's always the ability to pivot, but I, I would say no for the LMLGA. Uh, the UBCM, I think there's obvious advantage, uh, hopefully council saw that, uh, last year, last year's U- uh, uh, UBCM, with regard to the contacts that I have at the provincial level, as well as, uh, the local government level, uh, and, and sort of the assistance I can provide you with around navigating those things, but, uh, it's council's decision.
Okay, and again, we're gonna revisit that, uh, in the near future, so thanks for that feedback. Okay, we'll move to item number eleven, correspondence, and councillor Brown?
Okay, sorry, um.
Page eighty-five?
It's my, yeah, thank you. I essentially, uh, correspondence is typically received, um, and I, I think items, um, one. The first, uh, one, two, three, four, five, five items under general correspondence, I would just move receipt, uh, they're, they're on the record. Uh, I would however like to, uh, ask that the CN safety ambassador letter, um, be posted. Um, it's, uh, I have a frame if you want, want a frame. And, uh, I, I was thinking in chambers, but I think there, there's a lot more traffic in the village offices, or somewhere that this bright red, um, poster could, could go up in the office.
We could get a motion through the chair?
Yeah, Mister Blackwell?
If we can get a motion to that effect?
Okay.
I, I move that the, um, that the CN rail safety ambassador letter, uh, be posted in the village office.
And I think that's a certificate.
It's a certificate, yes.
Okay, uh, we have a mover, do we have a second? Okay, I'll second that. Discussion?
Okay, all right, we, we, um, passed a motion, I believe it was in September, uh, supporting rail safety. Um, and we have three crossings, significant crossings in our village. We had a bit, uh, an issue, uh, with stop signs at those crossings and, and, uh, that ultimately, um, I think there's been some real improvement in terms of, of how those have been redefined as crossings versus intersections and so on. And, um, so I think we, we've received, uh, uh, support from CN, uh, and, you know, we have a good relationship with them, and I think, uh, you know, we, we certain, safety is always a good thing, so I just think it's a great idea to post that certificate that we are provided as a result of our support of their safety initiatives.
Okay, we have a mover?
I concur.
We have a mover, we have a second, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, thank you very much. Any other correspondence?
Um, okay, moving into resident correspondence, um, we have, uh, two letters regarding the beach park design, and, uh, the, that, there will be discussion as, as indicated tomorrow night regarding the beach park, and, and I'm sure that we've all had a chance to, to read through that. Um, the, um, uh, third letters regarding increase in fleet size, and I, I, I think we just can, can receive that letter as well. Um, in addition, that there were, uh, two letters added, uh, that, that were, were sent to council on January twenty-eighth and January twenty-ninth, which I provided on table, and, uh, would like, like to, to speak to, and, and then, uh, perhaps we could speak to any of the other letters that, which you'd like to.
Okay, councillor Abbott?
Before we get to those, can I just talk to some of the beach park?
Sure.
Um, and, and I'm thinking that with Morgan's thing as well, can we send, um, this correspondence to Nick Bray? Um, to let them in these, uh, uh, the one that's on, on the agenda package, they should have seen, because it was, was part of the, yeah, regular staff, I'm not sure if they did that, um, but can we send both of these links to them so they can be prepared to, to comment prior to tomorrow night's meeting?
Uh, Mister Blackwell? Uh, councillor Abbott is suggesting we send the information that's contained in the correspondence to Nick Bray and Associates. Uh, had they received any of that in the past?
From the correspondents received to tonight, you mean?
Uh, it with, that's included in the agenda, there's correspondence on the, uh, tree report and uh, some other topics there that I believe have, uh, the beach park committee had reviewed in the past, and councillor Abbott is suggesting that we, uh, ensure that Nick Bray and Associates has that information so that they're well prepared for our meeting tomorrow.
Uh, I can say it certainly does no harm to have more information than less. Um, that in mind, um, it costs money, every time we have them read something, they charge by the hour, don't forget, they don't read this stuff for free. So whatever we give them to do just keeps ringing up the bill. So the test is, is it material? Does it have a material effect on what council's being tasked to do? If the answer is yes, then it's worth spending more money to have him read it. If the answer is no, then he may not want to spend the money on having him read it.
Okay, uh, I'm going to go to councillor Brown, and then I'm gonna come back to councillor Abbott, uh, both of them have their hands up. Uh, councillor Brown?
Okay, if I could just give a, a context here, I think the beach park, um, there was a beach park task force formed by Mayor Berry in December of twenty twenty-two, and there were nineteen members on that, on that task force, which broke into numerous subgroups, and one of the subgroups was the tree, tree subgroup per se, and.
Environmental subgroup.
Sorry?
It was an environmental issue, it wasn't just about trees, but.
Okay, um, sorry, sorry, it, it was the environmental subgroup, okay, and then there was multiple other, other subgroups, including the playscape and, and so on. Um, ultimately, uh, council formed the Lions Bay Beach Park revitalization committee, which was struck by council in January of twenty twenty-three, and, um, a part of the uh, process involved, that, that they were involved in, was there, was, uh, a, a tree survey was, um, undertaken and provided on June the fourth of twenty twenty-three. So, and that's a survey that's been provided, um, uh, in, in, in this, uh, in this communication. So my, my expectation would be that the materials that were provided to the uh, the materials from the beach park revitalization committee, uh, I'm, my understanding were passed on to Nick Bray and Associates. So I would expect that, that the tree report would also have been passed on to them. Uh, but, so, so that would be my expectation. Um, uh, as, as council's aware, staff was given the responsibility for the project, um, in, was it March, April of this, this past year, and so, uh, um, they're, they're, they're dealing with that, so.
Okay, uh, councillor Abbott?
Um, I was just gonna say, yes, this should have been passed on for them, this, I would expect this is as simple as them saying, yes, we acknowledge, we've read this, and if there's any things that are misaligned with the current design, they'd explain to us why. I think they've done this already, I just wanna make sure that that discussion is to be had.
Making sure.
Okay, Mister Blackwell, i- if it's okay, it sounds like council would like to ensure that they've got this information, they may have reviewed it in the past, and if they have, I'm sure it'll just be a check the box and, and move on, but just in case there's any information uh, from all that work that was previously done, from the beach park committee and others, uh, that would be helpful.
Happy to do so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, that's good.
So now, a suggestion on this one might not be, uh, is, what about, um, what Morgan presented to us? Hey, tonight, uh, uh, which is a revised version, we submitted before. Um, we pass this on to Nick Bray for comment, or is Steph gonna comment? Um.
Okay.
Ross hasn't, yeah, Ross hasn't seen the revised version before, too, isn't.
Mister Blackwell, this is on, uh, the Morgan Gatto, uh, one pager that he handed out this evening, I think, uh.
Which is an updated, yeah.
Today, too, it was on.
What may be appropriate is, is you, uh, review that, uh, and see if it, uh, it, it, uh, matches the numbers that you have and, and have a discussion with Nick Bray and Associates if you feel appropriate.
Yeah, we're working within, within an RFP con- contractual situation, so the numbers are set with regard to those contracts. Um, I don't wanna get into too many more details around the mechanics. Uh, you know, there's still some question marks with regard to, uh, the design. Um, what tweaks, will there be, will, will the tweaks cost anymore, will they cost any less? There could be cost savings, there could be cost, cost additions, we don't know, uh, those details until we have a finalized design. Uh, the target that, the expectation is that both of these entities work together to a certain amount, a certain value, and there's no, been no discussion or contemplation for that to be exceeded other than with regard to what I have suggested to council, uh, in respect of modifications to this design.
Okay, uh, councillor Brown?
Could I just request that, that this be scanned and sent to the CAO? Um, just for its information, if there's anything that jumps out at you that you might want to ask Bray about, or just so you're informed, going ahead for the meeting, um, just, just, just information.
Thank you.
It's the latest, it's the latest, you know, as, as you heard him say, he's, he's corrected a number of, of concerns.
Okay, anything else on the correspondence?
Um, yes, one other item, um, two other items, actually. Okay, um, we received a, um, a request for collaboration on Swamish Nation's climate legacy, uh, strategy, and, um, they've, uh, they requested, uh, they, they shared their climate legacy strategy, um, and have asked if, if we'd be, uh, interested in in meeting, uh, with them to better understand, um, uh, the uh, the implications of, of, you know, working within steward, stewardship, from a First Nations perspective predominantly. So I believe that, um, I, I, what we're gonna suggest is that I reach out and suggest that, um, and invite representative to join this climate action committee at their next meeting, which likely will be in later in March?
Last week of March.
Last week of March.
If everyone's personally, family things.
Stars align.
Yeah, because we have a core problem with everyone's, it's still gonna be personal, mate, family matters, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll just, I'll just read the first, first sentence here, I think, kind of, "On behalf of the Swamish Nation, I am pleased to share our new climate legacy strategy, a framework designed to address the climate emergency through actions rooted in reconciliation and sustainability." So, uh, communication is very important here.
Okay, councillor Abbott?
Yeah, so just, um, so we have seen this before, it has gone to the climate action committee. We were meant to try to follow up with it, um, at this meeting, which we didn't have for personal reasons in the forum, so it really has seen it, um, and it's great that we've got a, a name to contact to go back to. And I think, yeah, that's, we'll, we'll wind it up and then get the committee prepared, and then we can have some, this person attend one of our meetings.
Perfect.
Okay.
So I will reach out and I'll copy, uh, councillor.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the last item, uh, was, was a letter that was, uh, sent on, uh, January twenty-seventh from, from, uh, Trudy Luther. And she was expressing concern that each year with the remembrance ceremony, one of the challenges is, is for people to hear, we, we are an aging population, and, uh, really quite an invisible disability is hearing, and, um, so, uh, she was asking if, if it was possible to have, uh, a number of residents that had expressed a concern, and, uh, uh, reached out to, um, Public Works, Public Works, um, manager, Mister, Mister Burr, and, uh, we were going to meet and try to ensure that, that we had the best quality sound we could have in, in the, um, in Broden Hall. Um, there, there was a concern, there, there's a bu- budget item, um, in, in our budget, which has been pushed, pushed aside because it's, it's been deemed as redundant, but to replace the sound system and all. I'd like to really applaud the work of the works department, because they've, they've gone through, they've, they've identified that we really have a very good sound system, and that typically it's operational challenges, it's, it's the, the, the the system is good, we've had donated, we've had more speakers donated, uh, it. Uh, it's it's a matter of of getting it set up properly. We've got some excellent um. Um, wireless microphones, so long as the batteries are strong and and the thing is is properly operated. We should not have any problems. So but it's a matter of of bringing in some people, and Mr. Burr is 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 willing to meet with uh. Longtime resident, Hans Bradbold, and a couple of others, and and who will feel much better once they understand. The quality of what we have, and we'll 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 try to work out a a process to ensure that um. That anybody who's using the system is has has a some kind of a roadmap, has has um. Reads uh, clear instructions and or access to someone who knows how to do it. There's nothing worse than going to an event, inviting people to an event, building accessibility ramps so that people can get in. Sitting them down and then having them unable to hear. Um, we have a celebration of life for Barbara and David Enns on uh, March the eighth, I believe it is, will have. It will be a huge number of people, I'm sure, and a lot of them will be older. And uh, I I just, we will make sure that that the sound system is. Is fully operational and and working really well. So she had sent the letter just to make sure that that um. Council was fully supportive, which I assure you that the council is, to ensure that that we have a really good uh. Uh, product uh, in terms of our sound system.
Okay. Okay, all right, anything further, councillor Brown?
No, so I just move acceptance. Well, they'll need to, because if they're in the agenda.
Sounds good. Thank you. Okay, uh, there is no new business. Uh, we'll move to item thirteen, public questions, comments. Anyone from the gallery? No, anyone online?
To you, so you do was putting a hand in.
I was just curious why um, the public isn't invited to the meeting tomorrow night? Is that a specific reason or?
Yeah, it's more information, and I think uh, staff has set this meeting up and invited the council and uh, yeah. So, uh, Mr. Blackwell, any reason why that wouldn't be a council meeting tomorrow evening?
Uh, yes, it doesn't need to be council meeting. There's no specific uh, uh, decisions of council that are required. Uh, this is providing feedback, two-way feedback. Uh, to the design team and to council, vice versa, so that the design team can come up with a final design. Would that will final design will be coming to council for formal endorsement. Uh, so it's not, it's the the session is designed to. Uh, address the concerns of council that were articulated when Mr. Bray presented to council. It's not a working session with the community, it's a working session with council. That's the intent, to address those coun- council's concerns.
Okay, and I think further, it was last April, May. Uh, it by resolution of council, it was decided that uh, uh, the beach park. Committee information package would be handed over to staff, and staff would then check in the project from that point. So there is no resolutions, I think, is the the bottom line to be planned on tomorrow. Okay.
I guess it could have been a committee of the hall, couldn't it? We, I mean, could have attended and listened in.
Mr. Blackwell, could have been a committee of the whole?
Doesn't need to be. It's a workshop. So uh, doesn't, so that doesn't preclude the the community from showing up. Right, this is, you, I mean, in fact, I would go further. You can't stop the community showing up. Uh, however, that said, is then there begun, begin, begets the expectation. That the committee get, the community gets to weigh in into the discussion. Uh, and if that happens, then things spin off. Uh, very quickly, so that's the piece that would have to be managed. This is a, this is a session, a workshop specific to council and the design team.
To move things forward.
Okay, uh, is there any questions online?
No.
Oh, okay, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Yes.
Sorry.